Good afternoon. Carol from Deerfield Beach, Congressman. What due diligence did your office do before you chose to investigate the Deerfield Beach Housing Authority?
Well, first of all, I didn't investigate anything. Okay, so I didn't have to do any due diligence. The mayor came to me with an issue. I made sure that the right governmental agencies got involved, the inspector general. They filed their report. I got that report to the mayor in the store.
Ron, also from Deerfield Beach. I am an ARRA and DoD contractor and job creator. How will we provide for continued employment for our workers after the ARRA and DoD?
What do you mean after?
After ERA.
I mean, is this about the end? I mean, what do you...
Well, the ERA projects, I think you understand, were a farce. They took projects that were already in line, held them up for long enough, so they created unemployment, then they put the ERA projects out on the street again. We have a president who hasn't even run a lemonade stand in his life, he knows nothing about small business or small business creation. How are we going to transition from these ERA projects that are now running out back into real infrastructure growth that we need to...
I see what you're saying. I got you.
...to keep the jobs I've created as jobs and not put my men back on employment in as little as six to eight months by the end of the year? That's what's happening to us.
Well, I think that when we look at the infrastructure, you know, we got the new highway bill that's supposed to come up for reauthorization. We're going to be working on that. So I think that's another thing that we need to make sure, first of all, that stays clear here, Mark. But we need to start looking at, you know, the right type of project. I know Mayor Nolan, right here, has several projects, wrote issues that she wants back there behind Deerfield Beach, high school. So we need to make sure that those things continue in the pipeline. You know, once again, you know, stimulus and all this, he's a Band-Aid. We need to start looking and thinking about and projecting out whether the projects, whether things are going to be needed, the infrastructure with the sewage lines and things of that nature here, and making sure that we get it in a competitive bidding process down here to local small businesses, so we're not sending it to, you know, people that are out of town. And that's one of the big things that we have issues with, is, you know, how does the government in the bidding process, you know, ensure that our local small businesses have a say-so in? And as a matter of fact, you know, we are bringing forth a Contracting Opportunity Protection Act, myself and the chairman of Small Business Committee, because I'm sure you know about bundling.
Yes, sir.
We are going to stop this bundling thing, so that you can get in there and fairly compete for these things, so you don't have these gaps, so that you can continue to stay viable. And we'll get some information to you on that COP.
Sir, you realize that most stimulus projects will not put out for competitive bids?
I...
So we have projects like right out here where we spent an extra $10 million to build this bridge under ERA funding. We could have put it out for competitive bid and had another $10 million to go to other projects, other infrastructure projects in our city.
Oh, I know. That's part of that gray hair.
And I really appreciate your help with this now, always give us...
No, that's what we're here to do.
Walt from Plantation would like to know if he could look up his new district by his address.
You know, right now, it's been voted on in the House and the Senate. I don't think the governor has signed it, has he? The governor has signed it, but you still have some lawsuits floating around out there, so the ink is not still dry. You can go and we'll get you the website. You can look at the tentative new districts that are going to come about. As you know, a lot of the precincts were shifted around and changed down here in CD-22. This was, CD-22 was the perfect type of district. It was a competitive swing district. It was what you call a D-plus-one, which means you had 1% registered Democrats over Republicans. For whatever reason, the Florida legislature took it from a D-plus-one to what is a D-plus-six. And that means it equates to about 57% Democrat. And, you know, there were constituents that sent up three different maps for the people to go back and review, and it would have kept it at worst a D-plus-two. It would have still abided by Amendment Six, it would have abided by the Voting Rights Act. For whatever reason, they made the decision that they made. And so there was an opportunity that came about with Tom Rooney moving over to the new CD-17 district, which is north of Lake Okeechobee, all the way over to the west coast through Charlotte County. And so we prayed about it, talked to the family, you know, and we're going to go into the CDA team, which would be North Palm Beach County, Stewart, I mean, Martin County and St. Lucie Counties. But as I told Mayor Nolan, you know, I'm only a phone call away, so don't even fret about that.
Joan from Deerfield Beach would like to know what can be done, in your opinion, to reduce the oil prices?
Well, I think, I tell you what, you know, you saw that slide, 83% increase. On inauguration day, gasoline prices in United States of America were $1.84. One of the big things, I mean Keystone XL. We have energy resources here in the United States of America we should tap into. You know, just think about the natural gas deposits that are right off the coast of Florida here, that we could tap into. Every single mass transit vehicle, truck, could be on natural gas. Now, if we were to open that up for us to explore that natural gas, think about jobs here in South Florida. Think about the revenue share. Think about the second, third order construction, infrastructure projects that come here. So, I mean, it's a national security issue, it's an economic issue, it's an employment issue, that for whatever reason, we're not doing anything on. You know, when people talk about the fact that domestic energy production is up, you know why? Because there are private American citizens that are finding oil and natural gas deposits on their land, and they're opening up to corporations to come in and explore and drill and produce. It's not the federal government, it's the private American citizen that is doing this, you know? But when you look at the Keystone XL project, to say no to that, three years it was sturdier. 20,000 direct jobs, almost another 100 to 110,000 indirect jobs, and you say no. But yet, we sent $2 billion to Brazil for offshore oil exploration. We provided all kind of technical expertise to Repsol, so they could put an oil rig 66 miles off of our coast. It's unconscionable. I wish I could explain it, but I can't. What is more important, politics or good policy? Just like with the payroll tax thing, what's more important, gimmicks or good policy? This is what the American people got to start understanding. Get away from the immediate gratification mode. When the President of the United States is making tax policy based upon $40, I can't fill my gas tank up with $40. Can you fill up a shopping cart at the grocery store with $40? Most of our commodities, especially meat products, have gone up anywhere from 22% to 24%. Now, as gas prices go up, what do you think's going to happen with commodity prices in the grocery store? And this is the fastest we've seen gas prices rise in the history of the United States of America before some. Now, go back a few years. When gas prices were about to hit about $2.50, you heard about it every day in the media. We have got to start going after our own domestic energy production, oil, natural gas, coal, nuclear, biofuels, and renewables. But we don't need the government coming in and picking, choosing, you know, based upon our ideological agenda with your taxpayer dollars to some of these companies that they want to prop up based upon people that have been supplying them money.
Barry from Jupiter would like to know the UN mandates on children is making its way through Congress. Is there any way to kill those bills?
If it comes up to vote, it definitely will be killed in the House. And we are not going to surrender our sovereignty as a republic to the United Nations. It is not just that, it's the... There's this gun law coming out of UN, there's the Lost Treaty, the Law of Sea Treaty, where, you know, we started to give up award aways and things of that nature, X amount of miles in off the ocean. We're not going to do that. So with that, I don't think it'll see the light of day in the House. I don't know what, I can't tell you what's going to happen in the Senate compared to reruns that show.
The Senate ratifies treaties, and aren't they the...
Well, they do, but, I mean, with the Senate and then, of course, with the President. But if we have a say-so about it in the House, you know, we will bring up legislation to block it.
Larry and Carol from Delray Beach. It's apparent that President Obama and the Supreme Court Justice Ginsburg have little regard for our U.S. Constitution in recent statements they have both made. Shouldn't they reprimand it? And please explain.
Well, you know, we did, based upon the recess appointments, we did pass a piece of legislation in the House side, and, you know, one thing I don't want us to get bogged down in is this, you know, impeachment going, getting off focus, losing focus on the issues. Because, let me tell you, this whole contraception thing, that's what they want you to talk about. I'm going to be very honest. They don't want you to talk about the first amendment, they don't want you to talk about that issue of infringement and intrusive nature of government. They want you to talk about the things by which they can portray you as not really sane. Okay? So, yes, there have been incredible violations of the Constitution, but the thing is, they're very smart. They skirt right along the edges, you know? So what you have to be able to do is make those things issue points that you draw the contrast as far as how you're going to govern, how you're going to lead this country, how you're going to restore a sense of a constitutional republic. You know, the Senate, they're the Judiciary Committee, those are the guys that deal with Supreme Court justices. And so those are the people, that's why it's important to get a majority that will have the right type of Senate Judiciary hearing. And I have to tell you, be very honest, the biggest concern I have with four more years of President Obama is Supreme Court justices. That changed the framework for quite some time. So what Ruth Bader Ginsburg said, you know, we may not like it, but until someone can change the system of having, you know, judges that are there for quite some time, it is what it is. Now, I'll tell you this, it's going to be a very interesting decision that the Supreme Court will be hearing coming up March and April about the individual mandate. If the individual mandate fails, it's a house of cards. So let's see what happens in the, up there with that right now.
There's one more card, but it's more of a statement than a question, but I'd like to ask you a question.
Yeah.
The payroll tax, or, I'm sorry, the payroll tax cut that resulted in the mortgage tax that we saw the clip...
Yeah, the fees, yeah.
Is that effective currently?
Absolutely.
Like, it's happening right now?
It happened back in December. And understand this, it is not really a payroll tax cut.
Right.
Okay? What you're doing is you're stealing away from Social Security.
Right.
Okay? That's the whole purpose of having a payroll tax, is to have Social Security be a viable system. So what we're really doing is, we're destroying a system. We're destroying something that we promised to our citizens. So it's not the true tax cut. If you were going and cut taxes on, you know, capital gains tax or dividends taxes, something along that line. So that's the first falsification there.
Okay, and our final comment this evening is Kathleen from Highland Beach would like to know when you will be elected president and get you into the world. And she believes you're a better singer than President Obama.
All right, all right. Only on my birthday. Hey, look, we got some time, unless people want to, like, exit stage left, so, sir?
I keep hearing people talk about a 1% transaction tax.
Yeah.
Is that a reality?
It is, it is something that is there. I don't think it has been enacted, but that's part of the Patient Protection Affordable Care Act, that's one of those 11 new taxes wrapped in there. And also, came out in the news today, that new Consumer Financial Protection Bureau, they're going to look at getting rid of overdraft fees. Think what that does to the banks. I mean, someone's going to have to pay for that. Now, the problem with the Consumer Financial Protection Bureau, sounds very nice, right? Who do they report to? They report to the Secretary of Treasury, they don't report to Congress. So this government agency was created, the head of this government agency was put in position, and they don't report to the Congress, they report to the Secretary of Treasury. So, you know, watch out for that, because if that's something that gets instituted, you know, basically you're saying that there is no problem with bad behavior. I mean, people going out there writing overdrafts and overdrafts and overdraft, who's going to take the cost? Nobody else is. But political gimmicks versus policy. Yes, ma'am?
How successful will we be in seeing justice, sir? With the Fast and Furious?
Oh, we're going to stay on top of Fast and Furious and Solyndra.
How about global, MS Global?
We're going to continue, the good thing about the House is that we can continue to have oversight hearings, oversight hearings, oversight hearings, and we can continue to bring that up to the forefront, so that it can become an issue in November, that, you know, if you reelect a president, you're reelecting Eric Holder. If you reelect a president, you're reelecting Timothy Geithman. If you reelect a president, you're reelecting Lisa Jackson, head of the EPA. You're reelecting Janet Apollitana. So we will continue to hammer them through oversight hearings. That's one of the key things that we're going to, and really, that's the main power that we have, because, you know, 27 pieces of legislation sitting on Harry Reid's desk. You know, when people say, "You guys don't have a plan," whatever, okay, here's the six-point plan. Empower small businesses and reduce government barriers to job creation. Fix the tax code to help job creators. Boost competitiveness for American manufacturers. Encourage entrepreneurship and growth. Maximize American energy production. Pay down America's unsustainable debt burden and start living within our means. 27 pieces of legislation to fit within those six categories, sitting on Harry Reid's desk. So we're doing our job, we're doing the best that we can on the House side. We passed a budget last year on the House side. That's why it's important that you understand these things, you got to get engaged. I'll come here and then I'll come back over.
Is he doing that himself, or are the Democrats looking in there? I mean, is that the same, singular decision with...
Harry Reid is the Senate Majority Leader.
And who's got the...
Harry Reid makes the decision on what bills, what legislation gets on the Senate floor, just the same as Eric Cantor makes the decision on the House force side. But you talk to the Democrats on the House side, they have never been able to offer amendments like they are now. During Nancy Pelosi's reign, all legislation was written in her office when she was CEO. We have regular order in the House. Who pays them? Yes, sir.
In November of 2011, my small company up in Martin County was hired by Middle East or Eastern European countries to come over to do a security system, their aviation and port security. And I just want to hear you talk a little bit about national security, because if our national security is anything like what I saw less than three months ago, we're in a world of hurt. Just building on what you were saying.
Let me ask you all this. When you go to our airports, when you go to Port Everglades, whatever, do you really feel safe?
No.
It's an illusion of safety. Taking your shoes off, did that make you feel safe when you fly on an airplane?
No.
I mean, Richard Reid did that how many years ago?
2003.
What's the new thing that they're talking about now? They're talking about now the sticky bomb. Remember that movie Saving Private Ryan, the sticky bomb?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, that's what people doing. They're using radios and they're putting bombs and they're putting it on the side of cars. You saw that happen over in India. I mean, we're talking about a very adaptive enemy that's looking for gaps by which he can exploit us. And the most important thing is, you know, when I fly over to Israel, you know, I don't have to take a shoe off, I don't have to give up my water, I stand there in front of a guy and he grills me for about 10, 15 minutes, and I know the deal. The deal is, you got to look him eyeball to eyeball, you better not stutter. Because I saw some person stutter and they got carted off. But here in America, we say that's profile. But for them, that's trend analysis. In the military, it's trend analysis. They know a series of questions, they're looking for a certain type of response, a certain type of behavior. They're well trained to do this. But yet, we have a bunch of people over here to tell you, "Take your belt off." You know, finally, they let kids keep their shoes on, but, I mean, you know, they'll take Bill Murphy over here and they'll check his, you know, his crutches.
They'll make me take my shoe off, but no place to sit.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's... So, you know, it's an illusion of security and safety that we have. And like I said, go back to that last slide, please. Look at that. Remember Task Force Smith when we started Korean War? Task Force Smith, Army Battalion showed up in Korea, got decimated. They had the old-style bazookas that bounced off the T-34 tanks that the North Koreans had. When MacArthur showed up and wanted to do the Incheon landing, you know, the big amphibious landing, they told him, "You can't do it." Didn't have enough Marines, didn't have enough amphibious assault craft. Now, think about how insidious that is. Five years before, what was going on in the Pacific? In World War II? Amphibious landings, Marines, in five years, we had totally gutted our amphibious landing That's what we're doing. And someone's watching that, and someone is waiting. And that's someone right now, Iran and China. The last time you had an Asian nation that was in search for raw materials, energy resources, built a strategic navy and a strategic air force, it didn't end up so well for the United States of America. For those of you that are concerned, it happened right now. Yes, sir?
Congressman Webb, with national defense in mind, and I can think of many, many advantages that could be reenacted, but would you be in favor, if at all possible, of reinstating the draft?
No. And let me tell you why. You know, having been a commander, right now, you got the best military out there. You got men and women that are so committed. We don't have people at the strategic level in Washington, DC, that understand this new style and nature of warfare, to make sure that they have the right tools and equipment. I don't want to have, you know, my friends who are still out there as commanders spend 90% of their time with 10% of a problem. I want people to understand, when you raise your right hand, it's a commitment to this country. I don't want people that's been impressed in the servitude, because there are some kids, and you know, you see them around here, they got orange hair, green hair, all kind of... It'd be a nightmare, okay? It'd be like, what's his name, Stripes, Bill Murray. Okay? I don't want Bill Murray in the Army, okay? I want professionals. I want young men and women that are committed. And that's what we have right now. But they're right, the thing that is concerning, and I talked to my nephew, the thing that concerns him right now is that we are going to ask him to do more, a whole lot less. And they will never say they can't do it, but it's going to be hell for them to be able to do it. And then we got to be able to take care of them afterwards, too. So no, I say, give them, you know, the right size of a military based upon the threat that is out there, give them the tools, and give them the right type of orders and rules of engagement to go kick the enemy's ass. Yes, sir?
Follow-up on Department of Justice and a related question. What, is there any substance to the rumor that Boehner has struck a deal with Holder to give up a couple of underlings in order for him to get off the hot seat?
No, anything I say on that would be conjecture, so I couldn't answer that. All I know is that Darrell Issa will continue to have hearings and continue to bring, you know, those individuals before his committee and continue to hammer them every single way he possibly can. And, you know, we can't get rid of administration officials. That's the tough thing.
Impeachment?
Well, you know, it's, by mayor, it's a tough thing to do, you know, to impeach an administration official. But the case is built against Eric Holder in many different ways.
In the same vein, I must get 15 calls a week for money. If you don't give us your money, we can't get the word out. You're the only politician I've ever given money to, and I give it directly. I'm proud of you. But, you know, I respond, I answer the phone now. I usually don't answer the phone, but I started answering the phone and saying, "Look, you people conservatives are interviewed 25 times a day on every network in the world. You don't need my money to get the word out, all you have to do is open your mouth, like you do, and tell the truth." And they refuse to do that.
Twitter, Facebook?
You tweets?
Oh, yeah, I tweet. And I take it back. It doesn't cost any money for me to, you know, da-da-da-da-da-da. Okay? If you go and look at what I sent out today, I went through, found a Wall Street Journal editorial that talked about this thing, about increasing dividends taxes from 15% to 44.1%. I didn't have to go on TV, I didn't do anything. Da-da-da-da-da-da. And it's out there. And guess what? Again, I have 70,000 people that directly follow me on Twitter. We are the number one congressional office for Twitter and Facebook in Washington, DC.
All right.
That's how you get the message. So let's sound the call. Tell them it's you. Okay? All right. Yes, ma'am?
I want to know if you're happy with the GOP candidate?
Oh, shoot, I was hoping that.
And if you wouldn't, are you going to endorse anybody?
I'm not going to endorse anyone, that is not...
You don't agree?
No, that's not, look, I'm not going to endorse anybody. That, you know, my job is to be your congressional representative, and the American people need to make that decision. And I, you don't need folks that are out there trying to skew this thing. And look, I'm just a freshman member of Congress, I'm not that important, you know? So my name doesn't carry that kind of, that kind of weight. You know, there are a lot of things that we need to be focused on, instead of me worrying about, you know, who, whomever I want to pick. Whoever comes out to be the nominee, I will do my best to support them and enable them and help them to be able to get their message out. I will tell you that, you know, there have been some candidates that have gone out there and said some pretty boneheaded things, and a couple of them have called me and asked me, you know, would I go on TV and kind of help them get out of it? And I have, I have. You know, food stamp president. Yes, sir?
I know you can't explain things like why Harry Reid makes the decisions he does, but could you help maybe...
I don't know, maybe he had a bad childhood.
There's nobody to enforce that, but how come recently it was in the news that with the insider information that...
Insider trade?
...officials are given that the laws that are there for the public are not followed by the election?
Well, we've changed that, we passed the stock act.
But, I mean, can you help me understand how I can become elected and all of a sudden the laws that when I wasn't elected don't apply? I don't get how...
I can't, I can't make an assessment of what Congress did before I got there.
Because they were excluded in the law? I mean, because it said no legislator?
No, it just, it...
It's interpretation.
It just did not apply. There was nothing on the books that said there was anything that applied to them for that, you know?
Well, yeah, there was a law, though. I mean, there...
But it did not apply, look, I look at, I look at some of these people up there, "I give you a case in point." I mean, if any of you all had done what, you know, Representative Charlie Reinkle had done, you'd be in jail.
Of course.
Okay? So I can't explain, but this is what, you know, this is why term limits is so important. This is why you got to get people that understand that it is not about being a career politician and living outside of the laws of this republic. They're supposed to be upholding the laws, and then they're supposed to go back and live under the laws that they create, and so often that is not happening. There's a structural reform that has to happen in our American political system. You know, there is an entrenched group in Washington, DC, Republican, Democrat, no matter. There's an entrenched group that likes the fact that Washington, DC has become the center of the universe. And they don't want to see power diffused getting outside of the Potomac, because then who are they? A special interest in all of these. So, you know, it makes it easy for me to go up there, because I know who I'm working for.
Do you have a term limit, though?
Say again?
Do you have a term limit, the House?
Yeah, but, see, it's not really, every two years, but if you get into a district that's a D-plus-50 to 1,000, or R-plus-infinity, you can stay there as long as you want. And so that's why I think that we need to have some type of, you know, fail-safe.
Like Alphie H.P.?
I haven't called. But let me, let me close with this quote, okay? Because I think it comes to exactly what you're talking about. And this quote comes from 17 June 1788, George Mason said it. He said, "Nothing so strongly impales a man to regard the interests of his constituents than the certainty of returning to the general mass of the people from whence he was taken, where he must participate in their burdens." That's what I found out. So with that being said... So with that being said, never forget that this is still a constitutional republic, and the most important people in this republic are the individual American citizen. It's you. So thank you so much for coming out. God bless you.